You may disconnect. First order of business is closed meeting. Be it resolved, the Montgomery County Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia hereby enters into closed meeting for the purpose of discussing the following. Section 2.2-3711, paragraph one, discussion, consideration or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining or resignation of specific officers, appointees or employees of any public body. One, economic development authority. Two, Montgomery Floyd Regional Library Board. Do I have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Madam Secretary, if you'll call a roll.
Ms. Bladus?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Motz?
Aye.
Mr. Sherrin?
Aye.
Ms. Bell?
Aye.
Chair for Jakaski?
Aye.
We are in closed session.
Is there a motion to come out of closed meeting?
Motion.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Madam Secretary.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Ms. Bennet.
Aye.
Ms. Biggs.
Aye.
Mr. Demonts.
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd.
Aye.
Ms. Blevins.
Aye.
Shepherd, Jacaski.
Aye.
Seven hours.
Our next item is certification of the closed meeting. Whereas the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia requires certification by the Board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia, hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion conveying the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Madam Secretary, call and roll, please.
Ms. Bennet.
Aye.
Ms. Biggs.
Aye.
Mr. Demonts.
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd.
Aye.
Ms. Blevins.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Chair, Jacaski.
Aye.
All right, we have now come to invocation and pledge and if our county administrator would lead us.
If we could stand, please, for a moment of silence and then I'll lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Let us pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much.
Next item is public hearings. First one amend the fiscal year 21 budget.
Mr. Chair, this is a requirement due to the fact that we are proposing adding our carryover funding as one of the items under consent agenda this evening and in order to do that, we have to have a public hearing to amend the budget when it's more than 1% of the total expenditures in the currently adopted budget. It's just a formality that we have the public hearing, but open to anyone that may have any comment.
Okay. We didn't have anyone sign up to speak for this topic for the budget amendment, but if anybody would like to come forward, give your name and address and you have four minutes. Seeing nobody come forward, we will close that public hearing. Next public hearing is rezoning Jerry and Vicki Acres.
And Planning Director Gibson is going to lead us through that one this evening.
I apologize at present for how long I'll be standing here, which will leave four public hearings. We'll try to make a mistake.
You can do it.
We'll do it together. This first hearing before you is the application and information that's identified here for both for a rezoning of 1.317 acres and that's to manufacturing white M L for the use of a machine shop. And this is located right off of 11460, the Shawsville Magisterial District. Her vicinity matches our dot there, gives you a sense of where it's located across from the fire station and you also have the road furniture and then you can see the North and Southern Railway behind it. I think I got that backwards, sorry. This is still the fire station, this is road furniture. But it is most commonly known as the Granny Hill Meat Packaging Plant, Sausage Plant, et cetera. It existed and operated in our A1 district for some time. Back in 96, it was rezoned to general business to allow some redevelopment, which did not occur. There were no proffered conditions at that time, so this is just in general business right now with no conditions. And the contract purchaser, Mr. Kidd, would like to relocate his machine shop that's currently located in Salem to the site. We included a few photos for those who might not be that familiar with the building. This is the entrance and the main building and then you can also see a couple shots of the smaller garage that you notice on the site plan that gives you a sense of those. This is a panoramic of the entrance looking towards 11460. And then you can see sort of this backside of the building that you see when you're traveling west and this picture is also traveling west. This is kind of the back. A couple more shots there. The site plan that was included basically shows you kind of what's there and that they plan to use it in that way. The building is shown here in the yellow. They are planning to try to remove a little asphalt and put in a little landscaping just to break up that asphalt. They're including the spaces needed for their employees and they plan to use existing loading dock so that loading space up in the front there is planned to be used just as is. When we did the impact review, we started with transportation. VDOT has said they can use their existing entrance. One of the things to be noted is this parcel, there was plat already recorded and that plat shows a shared entrance. So if the parcel beside it, beside it is developed, they'll share this entrance, which is something that we always look for, especially on a main highway like 11460. At that time, it would be reevaluated in case there was a need for a turn lane depending on what that use is. There's a very small portion of the property located in the theme of flood zone, but there's no changes shown in that area. They're going to take out a little bit of that impervious service and they'll fully need E N S and stormwater at the planned rate usage if it is improved. You guys are pretty familiar, there's an interesting system we have in the Allison-Lafayette area, there is an existing septic on site that's not going to be used. It will connect to our sewer in that area, but it will still need a tank and they are prepared to install a new one. They are not required to connect to public water. It's actually all the way on the other side of 11460. They have some wells on site that they've done testing on. At this point, they may choose to connect or they may choose to do some of the well improvements, but it's a very low water intense use there. It would just basically be for employee restrooms. And so the P S A has been working with the applicant and his engineer to figure out what's best and most cost efficient. Once we start taking a look at the comprehensive plan, you can see for the Allison-Lafayette Village Plan, the parcels identified here as mixed use. And it really, we have some planning and land use goals and they're talking about small scale industrial and of course, we always talk about rehabilitation of old buildings. This is located across from some industrial uses, which is rarer in the county and then the structure is existing. It also provides some employment opportunities, doesn't need to really be screened, which is good because we know how close it is to that front setback there. But it sort of fits in with the character because it is part of the character of this part of the county. The use flex industrial for the machine shop is a good fit and there's no houses close by. The building is basically set up, although it will need much improvement, it's set up in a way that works for the applicant and they're very interested in moving forward. This will allow some room for larger projects, which is one of the things the applicant included in their application because of the size of the building. And but first they're looking forward into doing some of the improvements of the structure. And they basically say there's a couple of employees now and they hope to grow it to 10. Just will depend on the contracts that they can get and 10 employees is a pretty good fit because as you noticed, there was limited parking availability at the site. We went over the water, which is still an issue, but they have several options and again, they are working with Chuck with the P S A to determine what the best solution is there. Got a lot of compatibility, plus we're seeing the redevelopment of a vacant structure in the county. So the Planning Commission held their hearing and recommended approval of the rezoning with the proffered conditions and those were basically the conceptual layout that I shared with you, as well as the applicant chose some use limitations because that M L district can have some fairly intensive uses and these are ones that they would not pursue should the machine shop not move forward and someone else bought the property, none of these uses would be allowed at the site. And then also, we sort of have this proffering here for utilities. This is something that we worked on with the P S A and the county attorney because it could be another use in M L that could be more water intensive and the P S A at Site Plan Sage would really evaluate that and see if the line that they did connect would be adequate. And so that's what this proffer seeks to address. And we did have a seven to zero vote with two Planning Commissioners absent. And that's all I have for you. If you have any questions for me, I'd be glad to answer them and the applicant and their engineer are here also.
We'll go around the room. Supervisor Blevins, do you have any questions?
No questions, thank you.
Supervisor King?
No questions, thank you.
Supervisor Demonts?
I don't, thank you.
Supervisor Shepherd?
No questions, thank you.
Supervisor Biggs?
No questions, thank you.
Vice Chair Bone?
No questions, thank you.
And I'll just go ahead and make it unanimous, no questions.
That sounds great. Would you guys?
Good evening, my name is Barney Harrell, 3553, Carpenter's Cove Road in Salem and I have the honor, Mr. Kidd, with me here as well. I'm not going to muddy waters at all unless you guys have questions, we're just here to address any questions you may have, because it doesn't sound like heaven.
Okay. We didn't have any questions for Emily. Do we, does anyone have a question? Go ahead, Sarah.
Thank you for choosing Montgomery County.
Well, that's Mr. Kidd's request, yes.
Anyone else?
I agree.
Yes, and I think that is always a good thing, always glad to welcome you and of course, I've spoken to both of you in the past and I think it's great that this building that has been abandoned for so long and been the victim of vandals and training for police and gosh, I don't know how many things it's actually been used for, but it's nice to see it being used for something really purposeful and something that hopefully will be permanent. So thank you all very much. Mr. Harrell was the only one that had signed up to speak, but if anybody else would like to speak on this public hearing, you are asked to come forward, give your name, got four minutes. Seeing no one, we are going to go ahead and close this public hearing on this item. And I was going to say next, Emily, but you beat me to it. Proposed ordinance amendment travel center.
So our next application for public hearing is another rezoning. This rezoning has a special use permit also. It's a portion of a parcel located here. You can see the stars to the south of the town of Blacksburg off of Janelle Road. And this aerial gives you a shot of what the whole parcel looks like. You can see there's a single family home in the front here and there's an existing sort of shop building here in the back. So it has the single family residence, that's actually the driveway serves off Cinnabar there. They want to construct basically an administrative office at the site with one additional new building using the existing gravel driveway to access the rear. They would subdivide the property as shown on the, on the concept plan. And this would basically, again, just be administrative offices. There will be no outdoor storage, there'll be no employees, employee traffic coming to the site, no storage outside, any equipment. The house is shown here, you can see, this is sort of from that driveway off of Janelle and you can see how it's situated to access off Cinnabar. You can also get a sense of the topography, a little bit sloping down. This is a little pole bar that you can see on the aerial and this, if you haven't been by the side or if you're not familiar with it, this is just the gravel drive off Janelle. This is that entrance that takes you to the rear of the property. This is the existing building that's on the rear of the property and when we go to the site plan, you can see where this building is and where they'd like to put their proposed building. It is wooded around this area and also it does have some other topography buffering the area. This proposed property line shows you where that existing house is going to stay and the parcel will now be sort of elongated. The proposed office that they'd like to construct is here and that existing metal building is right there. This shows you a rendering of the building that they would like to construct. So it's a two-story, just over 2,100 square feet structure and using that existing storage building that's there. From VDOT's perspective, the entrance that there is adequate, you will notice on the plan that they have shown that entrance, even though it's going to be a low volume commercial which could stay gravelled, they are meaning to pay that. That helps get vehicles off Janelle, it'll be wide enough and people will be able to accelerate in and out as needed without having to worry about the gravel. From an infrastructure perspective, the P S A does not have service lines available in this area, but we do have a certification letter from the Health Department saying that there is a suitable site for private septic and private well at the site. It's not located in a flood plain and of course, any E N S and stormwater requirements will have to be met. If you take a look at this site, you can see it's great in our urban expansion area and you'll notice we bring a lot of applications for our urban expansion areas too because those are areas we've identified that we want to see some sort of development or growth in. This particular project, you can see Town of Blacksburg is just here to the north. Hits a lot of those items that we talked about in urban expansion. It's basically going to be something new, it fits in with the character of the area, the buffering of the trees and the topography and the limited vehicles that are going to be going to the site during the day. The Planning Commission was very pleased with how it was all situated because it's a low intensity user of all infrastructure, really. From an environmental standpoint, they will have to do stormwater B and P. They've already had some conversations with our staff on that and they will have a new septic system there. The drainage patterns will be covered with their E N S plan. And interestingly, we have the community business district designation, so that's what the rezoning is for district. This is actually a pretty good fit of community business, but contractor services were not allowed in that district without the special use permit. So that's why you see them coupled together. It's just going to be a few employees, no public coming to the site. The applicant's agent and the applicant are here and can address any questions you have, but the way that their work is set up, they have the materials and the employees go straight to the job site, so they don't use this as any sort of hub. We did talk to them a little bit about hours of operation and lighting and you'll notice that in our conditions for the S G P. But otherwise, all in all, we felt like it was compatible with the scale and character of the area as well as what the future of the area as well as what the future land use spoke to. The commission held their public hearing and recommended approval of the rezoning with the proper conditions of the layout, which I shared with you, and that the office building be constructed in general performance with that rendering of the building that we shared. That was seven to zero with two absent. And the special use permit was also recommended for approval with a seven to seven hours of operation limit. And also that any lighting at the site, just sort of reduce any glare onto adjacent properties and be dark sky friendly. That's something that, as we see these uses coming and getting fitted into areas where it's transitional with residential, any lighting that's on the site, no one will probably notice, but that condition sort of seeks to achieve that. And it was by the same vote of seven to zero with two members absent that evening. That's all that I have for you, but Mr. Simonis and the applicant are both here if you have any questions for them.
Okay. Before we go around and ask any questions, I apologize to anybody that was actually listening to me because I introduced the wrong hearing, but you straightened it out. Thank you, Emily. Supervisor Levens, do you have any questions?
No questions, thank you.
Supervisor King?
No questions, thank you.
Supervisor Demas?
No questions, thank you.
Supervisor Shepherd?
No questions, thank you.
Supervisor Biggs?
No questions, thank you.
Vice Chair Bone?
I want to thank you for your efficiency with all the projects that have been coming through the planning commission as well as here tonight. Thank you.
And I don't have any questions either. Mr. Simonis has something to add?
I've seen you guys in so many months. Yeah, it's been a while. So just touch on a couple of things. McGrady Labor, they've been in business for 15 years. We've worked on several projects with them that we've designed and they've installed. Jason McGrady, the owner, while we said they had three or four employees that are typically on-site in this building every day, they've got 24 employees total. And that's another business that currently is in Salem that is hoping to relocate to Montgomery County. Jason and his family live here in Montgomery County already, so we just wanted to address that and let you all know. That was another business we're hoping to bring back into the county. We're happy to answer any questions you have.
Did that bring up any questions?
No.
Salem's loss is our gain, I bet.
Yeah. Sounds like we got two home runs right here. So thank you and welcome, Mr. McGrady, bringing your business here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. No one else had signed up for this public hearing, but if you would like to speak, you're welcome to come up, state your name and address. You have four minutes. Seeing no one coming forward, we'll close that hearing.
The next public hearing that I have for you is a text amendment to zoning ordinance. This is specific to what we're calling travel centers. If you took a look at the information that was provided in your packet, you'll notice that we had an inquiry and we didn't have another comparable use defined. Doesn't mean we don't have something that sort of looks like a travel center or a truck stop in the county. It just means that those uses have this conglomeration of several parts of the code put together, but nothing was a clear use definition. And the other part is that modern truck stop is what we were searching for, and that's why it's called travel center, because we're all pretty familiar with these. We see them as we're going around. You have sort of a car-friendly, regular public area in the front with diesel pumps and other things at service, the truck driver community in a different part. So that's what this text amendment seeks to address. It's fairly straightforward because what we proposed was to add the definition that really kind of fits. We used a couple of different ordinances and looked at what fit with what we thought that modern truck stop looked like. We also identified, you'll notice, that the planning commission's recommendation says within one quarter mile distance of interstate highway exit or major arterial routes. And we wanted to, one of the things that we did with work session at the planning commission was talk about specifically what that looked like. The dark yellow you see is a quarter mile, and the lighter yellow you see is a half mile. And these are from single points. The actual where the ramp intersects with the local street is where the distance would be measured, so it's a little slightly broader than this. And once we started pulling that out, we realized a half a mile in a concentric circle was much larger than, you know, it feels. And after mapping it, the commission's recommendation was to go with that four-mile radius, any parcel within that area. We did it at both of our exits where we've kind of promoted development of some sort, Exit 128 and Exit 109, to sort of give you a sense of which parcels would be included. And the amendment takes that definition, and then in these districts, general business, manufacturing, and manufacturing-like identifies that it could be a special use permit in those districts. So in these districts, someone would have to come forward with their plan or do a rezoning plus a special use permit to identify what their uses were, how their site works, how it fits in, how it's compatible with those areas. Again, very specific areas, they have to be these districts and within a quarter mile of the interstate. When we had our public hearing on this, the planning commission did vote eight to zero. We had one member absent that evening to recommend approval. And that's all I have for you on that, but I would certainly entertain any questions I could have.
Okay, rapid fire.
For the travel center, and it says long-term parking, rest area, what provisions if it becomes something like a park-and-ride?
So those will be specifically addressed on a case-by-case basis with the special use permit. That's definitely something the commission was interested in also. And what we decided was instead of us saying, instead of us trying to come up with conditions, the reason we did a special use permit is so we could impose them or work with the applicant on their business model at that time. So while the commission was concerned about anything from park-and-ride to short-term rentals, do all sorts of things, we felt like if we said 24 hours, was that too much or too little? So we felt like that would definitely be something that if an applicant came forward, we would expect them to address before it got to you guys, certainly, but it probably via a condition of what their business model lends itself to on what is long-term parking and how do you sort of make sure people keep moving along also.
So it's not storage, so it doesn't become storage or a situation like that?
Or special housing, you know, it's not quasi-residential.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor King?
No questions.
Supervisor Demas?
No questions, thanks, Emily.
You're not even going to bring up that you put charging stations in there? I can't believe that.
I appreciate you adding charging stations. That's wonderful, thank you.
Supervisor Shepherd?
No questions, thank you.
Supervisor Biggs?
No questions.
Vice Chair?
So I'm a little bit confused because you refer that major arterial routes. Does that include 11460? Does that, you know, in the Shawsville-Elliston area, 11460?
Potentially, yes.
So there could be a travel center on that road. There could be a travel center on 460 bypass between Christiansburg and Blacksburg because there is a county gap, isn't there?
It couldn't be served from the bypass because the access is limited there. It'd have to be served up. The bypass...
But Cinnabar, that exit could have a travel center. I mean, is that, I don't know the name of that road, Pepper's Ferry Road exit on the Cinnabar side, could be?
More than likely not. We could run the map on it, but because it would be accessed off of Cinnabar, so potentially that one end, yeah, I don't think. It was meant to include 11460 in both our Shawsville-Elliston area as well as potentially, should it arise in Plum Creek, that area also.
But it could be on or off of 460, you're saying?
But the bypass is a, the high-speed limited access bypass is not an option. So that's sort of specialized beyond the, it's not classified as a, maybe in the same way.
I believe you, don't worry. And then on the north side or west side of Blacksburg, that 460 is in the county going up Brush Mountain. I mean, gosh, we would never want to have a travel center there or...
Based on by Pandapis or anything like that, but this allows that to happen or no? Well, we don't have any current zoning. That would be a good fit. And then on top of being zoned that way, you'd also need a special use permit too. You'd get a couple of bites at the land use apple there, and someone would have to put together something that really wowed us. And I think based on the limited infrastructure and the transportation, I definitely couldn't see that moving forward.
Thank you.
Can I ask a follow-up question?
Have I?
Oh, sorry, Steve.
I gotta get my turn.
Go ahead, take your turn.
My question is, would we be kind of limiting expansion of businesses by having this quarter-mile limitation? And the reason I bring it up is I noticed the picture that you used was the truck stop at the 175 mile marker. Also, Rockbridge has a travel center at the 195, which is actually, I think it's on Route 11 between two exits, so it would exceed a half a mile. And it's a pretty big, pretty big center. And I also understand that you certainly don't want a whole lot of truck traffic going up and down a two-lane road. I mean, that wouldn't make any sense either. But I'm thinking of something like our exit 109. There's currently a travel center there, a small one, but if one was to be built further, closer to Radford, because there's a lot of land in there that could be developed...
I believe 177 is also classified as the major arterial.
So that would fall under that rule. I know most of them are built on the interstate mainly because they need the traffic in order to make the business viable, which probably would make it less likely that it would, they would build one on 460, but we don't know what the future holds, do we? We don't. Follow-up question?
Just a zoning question, kind of more of a curiosity. As you're traveling down 460 and you get into the forest, that would be totally outside of all of the allowed zoning, correct? As you get in, as you cross into Jefferson National Forest on 460?
We don't have anything zoning for development there.
Okay. Okay. I think that's it.
We also don't have anything that would qualify based on, I believe it's resource stewardship in that area.
Kind of what I was thinking.
All right. We don't have anyone signed up for this ordinance amendment for the travel center, but if you would like to come forward, state your name and address. You would have four minutes to speak. Seeing no one come forward, we'll close that public hearing. Back up again, Emily.
Smile, smile. I'll try to go slow this time. The next text amendment we're looking at is related to signage. Most of you were here when we adopted the current sign ordinance, and one of the things that we did was try to make our ordinance constitutional. And so we took the whole ordinance and revamped it. We made a lot of great progress with it, but one of the things we identified were some sort of niche issues that would really bog down the whole process, so we sort of set them off to the side. And this is sort of a cleanup text amendment to address some of those issues that came up at that time. The first is along our 81 interchanges, the high sign we can have in Montgomery County if it's not on your building is 12 feet. And most people that invest in property near the interstate want to have a sign a little taller than 12 feet. And we have certainly done a lot in the land use and whether it's designating them as UDA's or going through the process of liquor by the drink. The county's put a lot of effort into making these viable, and we certainly want to attract folks, and if sign is a detriment, we wanted to go ahead and address that. And then back to our 460 corridor, along both, along the bypass, there were some questions that came up about how visibility could be improved there for especially those parcels that are in the county that were developed long ago, long before that bypass was even, you know, a thought that anyone had, and how can they make sure that they're being as visible as possible? So this text amendment, we're going to go through, tries to address both of those. The first thing we did was add a definition of what we're calling a high-rise sign. This means that you get up to 40 feet or greater with a special use permit. Right out of the gate, you get 40 feet if you're in a non-residential zoning district on a qualifying parcel of land. And that really the purpose is for that obtaining visibility from the interstate highway. And this has some supplemental language that really goes into how that parcel can qualify. But we took the same look at that half mile, quarter mile here, and we really liked the idea of the high-rise sign and the travel center tracking together. And so the commission really decided to recommend that quarter-mile radius to you for both of these. So the first item that we took a stab at was changing the existing language that we did, we took out that visibility and physical limitations and added what we're calling unique characteristics. And working with the county attorney, we felt like this really cinched it up and showed that you could come in with your comprehensive sign plan, show that you had a unique set of characteristics, and identify ways in which your signage could be increased, whether that's higher or whether that's area. And then the second part, we talked about a special use permit for these high-rise signs, and that's if a portion of the site is located within a quarter mile of the intersection. And it talks about how we identify that. So it's really where the ramp meets the local road, and you're trying to address visibility from the interstate. For the high-rise signs, you also have to be, there can be no more than one per parcel. The parcel has to be at least three acres or larger, and it can have no more than four individualized signs and cannot exceed 500 square feet in the area. It can be at any point never closer than 40 feet to the property line. Certainly, if you're going to go over 40 feet and you're going to come in and get that SGP, we're going to be talking with an applicant about how we're going to address whatever the height they're asking for. Things like balloon tests, which is what we do on towers, so we can see that there's topographic conditions or some conditions that lead them to need a higher sign for visibility, but also that if we're, we didn't want to presuppose what that height would be. We think it'll be context-sensitive for each. And we're all familiar with signs that you can see maybe traveling northbound but not southbound, and vice versa. So that's why we really like the special use permit aspect here, is that as an application came in, they could identify what that height was. So it might be 87 feet, and they can show you what that would look like, and they can show you how they are going to achieve that. And so we had a public hearing on that. The commission recommended seven to one, with one member absent, approval of this. You can see that even still with the SGP, it has to be in those non-residential districts, and those are listed out there for you, community business, general business, pet, manufacturing, manufacturing-like. That is for the high-rise pre-standing, but not for the SGP. That can be anywhere in the county that has a unique set of characteristics where they need something outside of what the existing sign ordinance allows. That's all I have.
There it is. That's my cue.
Emily, what, Commissioner Miller, did he state why he was not in favor of it?
Commissioner Miller did bring up specifically on the Exit 109 aerial, I'll show you a little better here, specifically on Exit 109, which is the area of the county near where he lives, there off my hike, that some of these, some of the properties were higher than others and that 40 feet right out of the gate may be too much. And we totally understand that thought process. We have 40 feet as a height limitation in other parts of the ordinance, and we liked the way that they fit together. We have 40 feet as a height limitation in other parts of the ordinance and we liked the way that they fit together. We also recognize that if you're looking at the dark yellow circles there, it only applies to those parcels. And so we didn't feel like it would be something that would be rampant throughout the county. Additionally, Mr. Miller was concerned about lighting because we do have a lot of agricultural uses in this part of the county, but this is designated as an urban development area. And so we are trying to attract more growth based on our land use policies. And so he was concerned that potentially right out of the gate, it may be a little bit too much. And that's why he voted the way that he did.
Thank you.
Supervisor King?
You could address his concerns by lighting, right?
So with the 40 feet by right and the lighting ordinance that we already have doesn't allow spill over onto other parcels. But if it were internally lit, we have, we have requirements that are built into the code on whether it should spill over or how bright it can be if it's an electronic message sign. So we do have some control in the ordinance. It's certainly not just wide open. I think he was concerned that there should potentially be more.
Yeah, I understand his concern because that's in my area. And you know, with the signs and people do live in that area too.
Thank you. Supervisor Demonts?
No question, thank you.
Supervisor Shepard?
So will this only pertain to Interstate 81 or will it also pertain to 460?
I believe this one is specific to the interstate.
Okay.
Let's go back and look at the definition. Yeah, so the definition actually says for obtaining visibility from the interstate. And then this language here identifies that it only qualifies for the SGP if it's in one quarter mile of the intersection of the ramp and the state or county rim. Yes, so it is very specific. And we only analyze exits 109 and 128 because our only other exit, 105, does not have any land that would qualify to be zoned in such a way, so.
That's all I have. Supervisor Biggs?
Uh, no Supervisor Blavins asked my question, so thank you.
Vice Chair Bone?
So if someone wanted a 40-foot sign near Duncan Ford Mazda, what would they have to do?
That area does not qualify for the high-rise sign. That area would fall into the comprehensive sign plan where they would have to demonstrate their unique characteristics and then what signage they would need. I will say when this tax amendment started out, that we looked at just basically doubling the amount of signage so that you could have signage along the 460 bypass as well as along the 460 business route. But the commission felt like there was then, we were then creating some inequity in that there are businesses just on the other side of the 460 bypass that would be right across the road and they would not get the same conditions. So they really took a hard look at what could be done on a case-by-case basis to really go with what the parcel, the parcel itself needed. Because we tried to sort of create an overlay district and just double it. We thought that we'd try to keep it really simple. And it turns out that these few changes that you see here really get at letting it sort of stand on its own and showing that when our business was created, that's a great example, we had no sense of a giant road coming in behind us. So how do we split our signage up and still make sure that people know we're here? And so doubling it could be something they wanted to do. We recognize that limiting what was on the front or on the side. But as you know, as you're traveling approximately 65 miles an hour down the road, a side may be better than a rear. And so as we got into the various specifics of it, we decided that leaving it up to a parcel to demonstrate what their unique characteristics, any part of the county, but this does address the 460 bypass issue, was really best because a business owner and a parcel owner knows their needs better.
And they could never have a turning pickup in the middle of, you know, as a sign? Like they tried at one point in time?
That would definitely require a lot more tax amendments that we've not prepared.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I don't have any questions. So we did not have anyone sign up for this ordinance amendment on signs. But if you would like to come forward, give your name, you would have four minutes to speak. Seeing no one come forward, we'll close that hearing. Go take a break now, Emily. All right, next item for business is our public address. Vicki, did we put the instructions for public address out there with the sign up sheet? The instructions?
No.
Okay. We only have one person that has signed up to speak for public address. But the board of supervisors allows citizens to present comments on issues deserving their attention during public address at each meeting. If you wish to speak, please observe the policy regarding public address and the presentation of visuals. I don't know if it's really necessary to read all these instructions since we only have one person coming up. But I will remind anyone that wants to speak, you do have four minutes and you do need to give your name and address. The only person we have is Betty Coleman.
Betty Coleman, I live at 1741 Stratford View Drive. And the only reason I'm here is because I've lived in Montgomery County for 45 years and I have never gotten involved in what you all do. And I think I need to ask your forgiveness for that. Sorry that I haven't been more, paid more attention. Anyway, if it's okay with you guys, I would like to pray for you. Does anybody object to pray for you? Thank you, God. God, I thank you for these supervisors of our county. And I pray for each one of them, that you would bless them and bring wonderful things into their lives, Lord. I pray that you would multiply their time and their efforts as they have families and jobs and then also do this, Lord. And God, I pray for miracles for our county. I pray for new business. I pray for safety. God, I pray for the police and the sheriffs and all the people that keep us safe. We pray for just miracles to happen. And I do pray that, God, that you would have your hand on this place and that you would give this county favor in your sight. And we ask these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right, no one else has signed up for public address, but if anybody else would like to come up, you're welcome to come up, just please give your name and address and you would have four minutes. Seeing no one come forward, I am going to close the public address. Our next item is addendum.
And we actually do have an addendum tonight. We have included it, should the board approve it, as item F under new business. And that is to schedule a public hearing establishing voter satellite offices for the 2020 general election. I'd ask that that be added to the agenda this evening.
I move the addendum.
Second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Madam Secretary?
Okay.
All right, any discussion? Discussion? No discussion, go ahead.
Mr. Shepard?
Hi.
Mr. Demonts?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Blavins?
Aye.
Chair for Shakaski?
Aye.
Seven hours.
All right, next item is items of consent. Is there a motion?
Seconded.
Second? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Just one question. All this, that money is left over from last year's budget, correct?
Yes, sir.
That's why I thought I'd just want to get that out there.
That's all.
Any other discussion? Madam Secretary, please call the room.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Demonts?
Aye.
Mr. Shepard?
Aye.
Ms. Blavins?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Chair for Shakaski?
Aye.
Seven hours.
Okay.
Thank you for allowing us to address all that in consent agenda or that was quite, quite a load. Thank you.
I'd say that's got to be a record of consent agenda. All right, next item is work session. Is there a motion to go into work session?
Seconded.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Madam Secretary?
Mr. Demonts?
Aye.
Mr. Shepard?
Aye.
Ms. Blavins?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Chair for Shakaski?
Aye.
Seven hours.
All right.
Board members, our first work session item this evening is a discussion of broadband. It's mainly to refresh everyone on what we've done to date and where we are. I will caveat by telling you that tonight, we cannot get into detail and discussion of the four proposals that the county has received. We are meeting next week to hear the presentations from the four firms that have made proposals to the county. And we'll be negotiating hopefully with one or more of them at that point as to details. So tonight, we can't share details other than I can tell you that what we are seeing from proposers is a combination of fixed wireless and fiber-to-the-home solutions. So we're very excited about that and look forward to being able to talk more. But tonight, Brian Hamilton is here and Ashlyn Shrewsbury from the Department of Economic Development. Brian and Ashlyn have been heading up the efforts to move broadband forward in the county. Ashlyn has been preparing the reports that I've been forwarding out to you each week to provide information. We had to stop that because like I said, now we've got four proposals and until we have more information to be able to share publicly, we can't say much. But I'm going to recognize Brian to bring us up to date on where we are and some of the things we're looking at moving forward.
Thank you very much for your time. I wanted to go back and get just a little history of what broadband efforts Montgomery County has gone through. If you remember Montgomery County, Neuter Valley Regional Commission applied for a broadband planning grant to the Department of Housing and Community Development. So that was a $30,000 grant matched by a $31,500 contribution from Montgomery County. From that, the county issued an RFP for planning service and hired Thompson, Litten, and Blue Ridge Advisory Services to perform the planning for telecommunications. The outcome of this study was to identify unserved and underserved areas of the county and for perform a bit of a permanent study. So that part has been complete. The next part was the, this broadband planning grant allowed us to move forward with our second RFP, which Mr. Meadows mentioned, which is a RFP for internet service providers. And as he mentioned, we perceive four RFPs. And the goal will be to provide internet service to unserved and underserved areas of the county. In the short term, I wanted to mention one thing Louisa County Public Schools have done. They have what's called a wireless on wheels program. And they have developed, basically it's not a fancy cart for $2,500 powered by solar that provides internet access for 300 feet around that location. So they have 24 of these carts that they park around the county and for the students to come, download their data and then upload the information they need for their school. And that's its really only intent, so. Louisa County has done a very good job with this. They have how to construct a YouTube site and how much it costs. So for $2,500, you could definitely put many of these units out in the county to extend broadband while we make a further plan. So as Mr. Meadows mentioned, to meet the needs of the county, we are going to have to go with fixed wireless and fiber based on location and terrain. And so what other communities have done, mentioned specifically Bedford County and Franklin County. Bedford and Franklin County have constructed or planning on constructing their own towers, which run $150,000 to $250,000 each and then partnering with internet service providers to provide service on their towers. Bedford has 11 towers, they're planning. So that's $2,750,000 just in towers. So I think as we move forward, we want to be, we want to cover as much of the county as we can and turn the best way to do it at the lowest cost and the lowest cost for the consumer. And then as Mr. Meadows mentioned, next steps is to work with our four RFPs companies to work on, go out. Questions?
I hope you're not sorry you said that because I think you're going to get some questions. Supervisor Blavins?
The, going back to Louisa, their, what's it called, wheels?
Wireless on wheels.
Wireless on wheels. And you said something, it's solar?
Yes, ma'am. It's solar powered with batteries. And so it does not have to be connected to electricity. And it is, the broadband is through, they use fast app, it's satellite internet. So it's not a fast product that allows, other than just the schools, you can place these units.
Supervisor Blavins, the reason I asked Brian to make sure we included that in the discussion is we recognize as we begin discussions with these four providers, it's going to take a little time to get things up and running. However, school's back in session in about a month. And if there's some opportunities for us to create some areas fairly quickly that can provide service, should students need the ability to download schoolwork or whatever remotely. The schools have done a good job at placing some hotspots around with the school facilities. But if there's other areas that need coverage, that's something that I think we could move very quickly to help provide access.
And this might be for the next subject, but would the CARES Act money, would that be possible to fund some of that?
I was, I was going to say, there's been a great debate when we do the CARES Act presentation. I think Angie's going to talk about that somewhat. We may pull Marty in on that discussion a little as well. There's been a great debate on broadband internet. If it's related to schools, we think that there are some ways to include it, but it can't be for any ongoing costs beyond December, so.
And then the next question, and that, you know, that would might be a temporary fix because obviously broadband is going to take a while for us to, to get everywhere in the county. But is there any initiatives for solar, for any grant money or any way that we can look at that?
As far as these units, no.
No.
You know, Louisa County paid for these straight out of their pocket for their students. And that was how it was determined. So, you know, if we chose to move in this program, we could, quote unquote, work to see if we can meet their $2,500 cost and how many units we wanted to deploy. Emily?
Thank you.
Supervisor King?
What is the lifespan of these units? Do you know?
I would say the lifespan based on just viewing it is about a year. You know, it's nice, it is pretty much a metal, I don't think I would say it, metal trailer with wood. So I would say it's not a long life. If you wanted to have a longer life, you'd have to put metal in the structure, which would of course increase the cost. And again, that can be done, but I'd say about one year from what they have shown.
So would you, like in my area and some of Steve's, you know, I know the schools have some sitting at school parking lots and stuff like that, but like in the rural areas, have you got any idea where we would sit them at? I mean, would it be on somebody's property or?
Generally, you would go with county property, school property, fire apartments, rescue squad. Louisa County also works with grocery stores that whoever will allow them to place them. So, you know, any county facilities would be no problem. And any person to him or her were interested in. And any person to him or her were interested in hosting one of these facilities and having people drive up and leave.
So it would be, it could happen on somebody else's property. Like I said, you know, in rural areas, you know, you don't have all these stores and
Right.
restaurants and county property. That's all. Supervisor Demonts?
Um, I definitely think the Wireless on Wheels is an interesting concept, but it kind of opens up a can of worms. One I would be interested, is there a demonstrated need within the schools beyond what they're already serving with their hotspots at the school locations? Have they demonstrated a need? If we're discussing this as something that we would use primarily as an educational tool to facilitate downloading and uploading information to the students' Chromebooks, then I would want to know, do they need that beyond what they've already accomplished? And then, of course, that leads to the question of if it is being used for a school function, would it need to then come out of the school's budget? And that would be another whole conversation to be having. I do like the idea and I like the out of the box thinking. I think that it's going to take a whole lot of that to move the needle on broadband and to temporarily solve some of the issues, especially in light of the changes in how we're educating students with a global pandemic. So I appreciate what you've brought to the table. I appreciate the creativity that you're bringing to the table. But I think if we were to consider that idea moving forward, we would need to get the schools involved before making any types of decisions on this board.
If I can just add to that, we have the monthly county school liaison meeting on Wednesday. And one of the things I was going to bring up is I know the schools have used a lot of their funds for these Wi-Fi connections for the students. One of the questions that I want to discuss with the school folks is, are they aware of any areas in the county where they're not being able to deploy those at all because of lack of service? That might be the ideal places for us to look to put a device like this, which would then allow them to expand their capabilities. The schools have used their CARES money to a large degree to buy these Wi-Fi hotspots for the, for the students. But as Brian and I have talked about this over the last couple of weeks is, well, that's great for the students that have access, but we need to try to start determining where they, if there are clusters of students that don't have access and how we could assist with that.
I definitely, yeah. Yeah, and I definitely agree with that. And I'm glad that we will be able to continue that conversation in collaboration with the school board. Thanks so much. I know this has been a very long, ongoing project, and the progress already at this point is significant. So thank you very much for everything that you've done.
I greatly appreciate the board's, I guess, support of this project. It is, as you know, extremely important for our citizens.
Yes. Yeah, thank you.
Supervisor Shepherd?
I have several thoughts and maybe suggestions more than questions. I assume since it's solar, it doesn't use a whole lot of electricity, first off. Second, that being said, how much cheaper would it be if you didn't have to furnish the solar? And say we parked it at the fire departments or churches? That would allow us to have access to power, because it wouldn't cost a lot.
I don't have an estimate, because this is the model that they have created, and we'd have to go back and redesign, you know, do we still want batteries in case of power outage? You know, we would have to look at those circumstances.
You know, I was just thinking about while you were speaking, where, where would you put? You know, and you'd have to have adequate parking if you had half a dozen people show up at one time. I mean, so it would almost have to be in a larger parking lot area. And there's just not a whole lot of those around, like in Norishrun and, you know, McCoy. And so that's where I was going with my thinking. But yeah, I, I don't see why it wouldn't be a lot cheaper. The, I mean, I think the solar equipment would be somewhat expensive, but a big expense of that $2,500. But that's all I have.
Supervisor Biggs?
A lot of my questions have already been asked, but I would also suggest that I'm really glad to see that we're going to be talking to the school board. I really think that, you know, that's been the crying issue is to try to make sure all students have Internet access. And if for some reason, you know, things don't go as planned and we're back to virtual, that's going to really be important. So I wondered also, Brian, are there any other out of the box things that you found, you know, in the research? Because that's pretty interesting with Louisa County.
In my research, that is probably in Virginia, the most out of the box, you know, thought. You know, giving the children the Wi-Fi so they can connect is great. This goes a little bit beyond that. But being able to set up basically hotspots either through Louisa County's method or otherwise, that would be the goal.
Well, thank you for bringing that forward.
Vice Chair Bone?
So how much does satellite service cost?
I do not know, but I can find out how much a satellite service costs. They do not list an ongoing monthly charge.
And is this the same kind of satellite service that Hughes or whomever provides the satellite? So it is affected by clouds and weather sometimes? And the upload and download aren't really that fast? And it doesn't give you a lot of data? Is it, is it, do you have any idea if it's similar to other satellite plans?
Wi-Set is one of the satellite plans with HughesNet. The intention would not be for, quote unquote, more than email and loading, uploading and downloading assignments. And so, you know, the speeds are not going to be extremely fast. But put in the right places, you could allow other, you know, you don't have to drive a couple of miles to get to a school or otherwise. You could just go to this station.
And would it be free to the students?
It is free, yes.
And we would pay for the cost of the satellite service?
That I would have to find out exactly if Wi-Set is donating service or if Louisa County is paying for the service. But they mentioned no cost of the satellite.
Interesting. And I'm assuming, but it's important to ask the question, that the reason why it's going to be there for a year and maybe not be functional after a year is because we hope the pandemic finds a vaccine and so we can all go back to normal work. But it sounds disposable, right? If there's only one year of service? Or is there a possibility of it having longer service? What, what wears out?
So based on the metal parts and the solar cells, those will be the two parts that could be taken and used for other purposes. I know Kylasi County has placed generators on similar, much larger sized parts, but generators that they can move around the county in case of public.
What is the different, so I have a good understanding of what satellite is, but hotspots, are they required to have like a visual distance to a source? Is that what a hot, it's not, it's not a repeater, but it's sort of like an end? It gets the data from the school and brings it to the parking lot?
Hotspots, hotspots similar to a cellular signal has to be within a certain range of the, of the unit that's transmitting. I don't know if it has to be line of sight per se, but it's got to be relatively close.
So it just boosts, you know, that, that location might have been weak if you were just trying to pull the cell, a signal?
Well, the Wi-Fi works similar to a cellular connection with a phone. It just connects to the cellular network to provide Internet to the device. So, so if you have a, if you have a laptop that doesn't have a wireless Internet card in it, the Wi-Fi converts that to a cellular signal to communicate with the tower to pick up a Wi-Fi signal, isn't that right?
Wi-Fi is only different broadband through.
That's true, yes.
So this would be basically a standard Netgear router. Satellite service comes down to a standard router.
On these boxes, yes.
On these boxes.
Yes, but thank you.
I was just hoping to understand the difference between, I mean, I get.
One is cellular, and so if you can get a good cell signal, it works fine. If you cannot get a good cell signal, then it won't work at all.
Okay. And it creates a Wi-Fi at that spot? Okay. So, not that I know McCoy very well, but I know a lot of people go tubing down there, and there's a big parking lot down there. Is that, could that have been, you know, you put up one of these temporary things down in the, where you, you get your tubes?
I don't know. That's a private entity, so you'd have to, that would be up to them, because they have a gate that they lock when they're not in business.
Or Allegheny Springs where, down where Steve lives.
You got a big driveway.
You know, you've got that, you've got that little store or whatever that is kind of halfway down or maybe, you know, whatever. You can just throw one of those up, because you got, as long as you got a clear line of sight for a satellite, you could actually serve a lot of the little haulers and stuff like that at this point, right?
Yes, so Louisa County is going to 20th, right now.
And then all along the way, I just don't remember us referring to anything about 911. Does any of this broadband stuff tie to our 911 services?
As we get into the discussions with the providers and looking at, especially with fixed wireless possibilities which require towers, as Brian mentioned, and other things, we will certainly be including 911 in that discussion. Because towers, existing towers and perhaps new towers can benefit not only the dispersion of broadband out into the county, but depending on what we have to do and where we do it, can also be a big boon for 911 service as well.
And then also, and maybe I'm misspeaking, but the sheriff's department's communication.
Radio connection.
Radio connections would.
All that.
All that, okay. And then, and lastly, thank you, Brian, for having a full-time job and taking on broadband, too.
I appreciate my full-time job.
Yeah, you're doing such a good job, Brian, that maybe we'll find other things for you to do. Yeah, one more, one more time. My fellow supervisors had asked some very good questions about that hotspot. I'm very interested in it, because I could see a lot of different configurations for it. I'm sure we have buildings we could put it in, skip the trailer altogether.
Yes, sir.
Skip the, the solar altogether and use it that way. We also have locations in the county where the hotspot could be fed by cable at a much higher speed than you could get through satellite and/or maybe even fiber connection to it to feed it, which of course is going to reach more people in the parking lot.
Right.
I don't, I don't know how many you could put on, on a, on a satellite connection, but that's something that could be determined. But I like the idea of using it temporarily, especially during the pandemic, until things get a little bit closer to normal, if that's possible. But definitely something we need to speak to the schools about and about what they've done so far and what could serve and whose CARES money would we use? So those are all good, all good topics. You brought up something that I don't recall when the consultants reported, and that's the locations for towers.
Vertical asset inventory, yes, sir.
Yeah, see, I can't say that, but the hotspots. Anyway, when they did that, I don't know if you recall, did they actually identify places where we have some control over? We could put them in or has the right of way issue not even?
No, I mean, they identified every water tower and basically public facility like.
Yes, I remember that now, yeah, okay.
They did a very extensive job.
So the places they identified is places that we have control over and we could
Yes.
make that happen.
And that's, and that's critical as we begin to talk to these providers that have submitted RFPs in terms of being able to move quickly in placing towers and whatnot out into the community to extend broadband. Now that we have that vertical asset inventory, we can talk more educatedly with the providers about opportunities to do that more quickly. The challenge that, and Brian mentioned Bedford County, I'm familiar with Bedford and Franklin. They don't have some of the vertical assets that we have in Montgomery. So they've got a lot of work to do to get to that point. We think on that regard, we're further ahead. You've just got to get providers that are willing to put stuff up there and start selling service.
Okay, I think we beat you up enough, unless there's follow-up questions. Good. Anybody else have any follow-up? Thank you, Brian. Appreciate it.
I really appreciate Brian and Ashlyn's work, like, like several, like you said, they do have full-time jobs with economic development. But this is something that's very important. And as we move forward with these proposals, one of the things we'll be asking as well is how quickly can these proposers tap into grant monies through VITA and through other agencies? Because none of these, none of these opportunities are going to be inexpensive. And so between the county's assets, grants and providers that want to make a difference in the community, we're hopeful that in a couple of weeks, we can start talking about some projects instead about, instead of what we want to do, here's what we're going to do. So, thank you.
You ready for CARES Act funding?
Yes, sir. Next work session item, talking about what we're going to do with some money. Angie's here with us this evening to talk about where we are with CARES Act funding, things that are moving forward. There she is back there, I couldn't see her. Where things are with that process and next steps with regard to that. So Angie?
Good evening. We are going to talk about the CARES Act tonight, and that stands for the Coronavirus Aid, Relief and Economic Security Act. People say that all the time, and nobody really knows exactly what it stands for, but that's what it is. The CARES Act was signed into federal law on March 27, 2020, and the state of Virginia received $3.1 billion. $645 million of that was distributed to Virginia cities and counties, all of them except for Fairfax County, which got a direct allocation from the federal government. And Montgomery County received almost $8.6 million. That was based on population census data that the state used to allocate between cities and counties. The finance directors of the two towns and I met and discussed how we should divide this money, because the state did say that counties that receive the funds who had incorporated towns need to share that with those towns. So what we discussed was, we need to set some aside for the task force. And this was in April when we were discussing it. So we didn't know what was going to happen down the road, which we still don't know. So we decided to set aside 25% for the task force and also in case we need other things that we had not anticipated at this point. The balance of that is $6.4 million, and we divided that between the towns and the county based on a combination of population numbers, because you know, there are all different kinds of population numbers that you can get. So we used what the state had used. Also, we took an average of what the state used as population, school age population, and what the individual localities had reported at the end of June of 2019 as our populations. And we took an average, and that's how we split those up. And actually, the town of Christiansburg, which has the fewest dollars, the lowest percentage, that is the financial director that came up with the plan. It didn't make a huge amount of difference as to which population number we used, but that's, so we decided to just use an average of all three. The eligibility requirements are a little bit vague and also specific and guidance comes out every day. And every day, some of us get about 20 or 25 emails about the CARES Act.
And then some of us forward those 20 to 25 emails to other.
So then we get them again, two or three more times. That's okay. It's better to get it more than once than none, right? The eligibility requirements, the basic ones include the costs have to be incurred due to the COVID-19 public health emergency. They could not have been accounted for in the July 1st, 2019 budget. And that's a little bit confusing, but if you think about the time that the funds were distributed to us, we still were in the budget that was adopted that year. It did not address anything with the 2021 budget that we just started. And the expenses, even though the law was passed on March 27th, the expenses can go back to March 1st. This is a mistake too because it says that they run out on December 31st, but it's really December 30th. I can't. We talk about that a whole lot, why it's the 30th, we don't know, but then I put the wrong date on the slide. Um, also, we have a certi, we had to sign a certification with the state that said that we would, um, follow the guidelines and if we did not follow the guidelines, we return the money to the state if we did, or the federal government, however that state tells us to do it. Also, if we have any funds left over on December 30th, we're to send those back as well. We have a document in process to distribute to the towns that will say the same thing because the county, since we receive the funds, will be the ones that are responsible for them. So the towns will sign an agreement with us that says that they will follow those same guidelines and a few more that, um, speak to what the eligible expenses are as we've got more guidance on that. So I talked about the task force and the amount of funding that they were gonna have set aside, which was just about, um, $2 million, a little over $2 million. The task force supports the whole entire New River Valley, so it supports some localities that are not in Montgomery County. Those localities have agreed to pay a portion of the task force costs, so of the funds that we have received, we, we have fronted those so far and it's spent, it's been about $200,000 through the end of June for the testing, um, and PPE, that's what has been spent so far. We will be, as this moves along, um, invoicing the other jurisdictions and receiving some funds back for that, a portion of that. The task force met Friday to discuss their future budget and, um, I spoke with Michael Gary this morning. They have planned for some items. They don't have exact cost of those yet, but the items that they're planning right now to spend their budget on include further testing, some antigen tests that have been approved, and equipment to process those tests so that the results can get returned quickly. Our portion of the marketing campaign with Virginia Tech that is underway, radio infrastructure and a backup site for the 911 center, if the 911 dispatch center would needed to be closed, if someone was sick there and they needed to move to a different site, um, potentially a backup site for that. And also potentially a mobile command unit. There are some, that is the, um, vehicle that goes to, to the test sites and right now Virginia Tech is being used, but really the task force needs one of their own. There are some challenges with getting a mobile command unit set up and in place and ready to roll by December 30th, so we're not certain about that, but that's something else that we're looking into. As far as the county goes, through June 30th, we spent about half a million dollars on personnel. That's the COVID lien. You might remember that you guys passed a resolution that, um, provides COVID lien for employees if they meet certain criteria. So through the end of June, we had spent about half a million dollars for that. We had spent about $120,000 for PPE sanitation, social distancing measures, telecommuting, which includes some IT upgrades and equipment that individual departments needed while the building was closed so that we could continue operations and some additional work for you guys to have your virtual board meetings. So that leaves us with a little over $1.8 million. To address how to spend that money appropriately and responsibly, we've established a CARES team and we have, uh, the team has requested all of the directors, department heads, agency heads and court courts to submit, uh, requests to us. And we've started reviewing those. Based on those requests, our planned uses include ongoing COVID pay because people still at times need to use COVID lien. Um, we'll continue to purchase PPE for the county. That, that's for county employees and for citizens. The task force buys their, the PPE that they need. This is just for the county. And, um, we still are buying more sanitation supplies. We're still improving our social distancing. We, um, had a request at, to redesign the treasurer's office lobby so that, that distancing can occur in the treasurer's office and still serve as many customers as possible. So that project is, has started. It's, um, being evaluated and we are working closely with the treasurer on how to get that set up. Also part of that, um, our electronic payment options, the way people can pay online, the vendor that we are going to use, um, in the upcoming year has a kiosk that we can purchase, which is less than $5,000 and it's a standalone. It's like an ATM machine kind of, and it can go in the lobby of our building. That way people could come in and pay bills there instead of coming into our office to pay PSA bills or going to the treasurer's office and pay in their office. So that'll help us with social distancing as well. We have a payment drop box outside of the government center now. It's not in the best location. It's kind of on the wrong side of the road if you're pulling up to drop your payment off. And it's not, um, it, when we put it up, we didn't think we would be getting a whole lot of payments in that drop box. It's not the best solution for today's world when a lot of people do just want to come up and put their payment in that. So a new, uh, drop box was recommended. The courts have requested signage, sanitation, um, social distancing and closed circuit TV for the courts. And, uh, also an outdoor space for animal adoptions, what we think for that, the best thing that would be for that is like a pre-constructed gazebo kind of structure so that when people come to adopt the animals, they, they get to meet the animals and see how they interact. So that will help keep people out of the building, but still provide shelter for the animals and the people in inclement weather, if it's too hot, cold, raining, whatever. So that will help us with social distancing as well. We still need, uh, some IT equipment replacements. We, um, were able to figure that out pretty quickly when the building closed down for two weeks that we needed a little bit more than we had. We did, um, get through that fairly well. And also our remote connectivity solutions, the way we log into the building, we have to, um, revise that. We've come up with some new strategies for that to allow more people to telecommute more stably and securely. We are looking at HVAC, um, our HVAC systems in all of our buildings. The CDC has issued guidelines and a lot of what they talk about is air intake and exhaust, fresh air intake. Some of the buildings are already monitored. The newer buildings are already monitored electronically, computerized electronically of that. Some of them are not. Filter ratings and the amount of, the amount that the air is filtered is another big factor. And they've just recently, um, included on their website, UV germy.
Disinfection.
Erad, how do you say, eradicate?
Eradication?
Yes. That's right. Eradication.
eradication and disinfection.
Right, so we're looking into that too. Um, we have a vendor that's already started to look into that for us. We're also looking at touchless restroom fixtures and touchless water fountain and water bottle refilling stations. Right now, we just have out of service on the water fountain, so we're gonna work on that. Um, additionally, Blacksburg, Christiansburg and the county are looking at developing county-wide grant programs. Blacksburg is heading this up. They've gotten some guidelines proposed for us for small businesses. It, um, would be businesses with less than 50 employees. They would have to have more than just the owner as an employee. They would have to have other employees as well. And the funding would be based on the number of FTEs that the business had, and there would be a cap on that. The companies would need to apply and show that they had an income loss and, um, they would have to give receipts to us to show us what they're spending the funds for. Some localities are not requiring that level of documentation, but we felt like it was important since we're the ones that are saying, yes, we did spend this money on the right things that we need to be able to show that we did that. Also daycare facilities and, uh, preschools are another grant program that's in the early stages of development, which again, the town of Blacksburg is heading that up. But the three jurisdictions, the two towns and the county would have the same program so that it would be equitable throughout the county. And that funding would be based on the number of children that were licensed or if it's a, um, religious facility that doesn't have to have state licensing, the number of, of children that is their adequate capacity. Half of that, of the, um, capacity would get a certain dollar amount. That's what's being talked about at the current, um. Do you want me to talk about the broadband thing?
Sure.
Broadband would be challenging. Obviously, we can't build whole infrastructure for broadband by December 30th. I did talk with Marty about that, the challenges with providing internet service or broadband for certain populations. I'll let him talk about it a little bit more because I'm sure he can share more facts about it than I can, but if, we would have to identify specific populations in areas of the county that would qualify for this, and it would have to be for a COVID-related purpose. So obviously, if school is not completely in person, that is a COVID-related need. However, as you discussed, that might be a need that the schools would be able to cover or perhaps they already have. Want to add anything to that?
Um, yeah, the, well, Angie, uh, is that, there's a, there's two hurdles that are really tough to jump. One, you have to incur the cost before December 30th. So to do something, um, you're on a small type, uh, timeframe. And two, you have to show, you're gonna move, use the money for, um, broadband. You have to show that you're actually serving somebody by that December 30th date. What I mean by that is you can't, like, let's say you use, uh, like Brian talked about towers. Let's say you wanted to build a couple of towers, um, to start building your, your backbone to, uh, to better service. But if that didn't actually bring service to anybody who needed it because of COVID, then that would not be an allowable expense. And then the other problem is, uh, come December 30th, you can't use, that money dries up. And so whatever you put in place for broadband, if you continue in cost, you're gonna have to look for other, other ways to fund it.
Which is why the, as, as Brian mentioned earlier, the discussion of these mobile field spots or whatever, they're, they're temporary. They could be temporary. They're primarily to address, uh, needs for students and whatnot. So we're trying to figure out how to make it fit in the box and also serve a, a purpose too, so. But as Marty said, the, the big concern, and we've heard other communities that are talking about using it to expand their broadband and all that. I can't see a way that beyond December 30th, that's gonna work.
I don't have, um, good enough estimates for our planned uses yet to give you estimated costs, but as soon as we get those in, we will share those with you. We do have preliminary estimates, but we need to flush those out a little bit more before we share them.
Are you ready for questions?
I am.
Okay. We'll go ahead and we'll start in reverse this time. Supervisor Biggs?
Um, well, um, I'll be real interested to find out, you know, like what the estimated costs are, number one. I, I'll be really interested to find out if we can do anything for the broadband, especially for the, um, children. Um, I'm really glad to see on here that you have the air intake and exhaust and the filters because this has become really evident that the way this virus has spread. And so, um, with the filter ratings also, did you consider how you're gonna have to change them more often?
Yes, yes. Train is the, um, company that we contract with and Scott Woodrum is talking to Train right now about doing this project for us, and that definitely is included in that.
Okay, and, um, we're gonna sort of stockpile, I guess, the PPE?
We can do that.
Yeah, because I think that's gonna be, that and the sanitation, I feel like we're really gonna, until something happens, we're gonna need it. And you go through it faster than you think.
Right.
So I was glad to see that. Do, um, do we have to like hire specialty companies to come in and clean out a building if something's happened or is that something county personnel can do? Because that would be another cost.
Um, we don't have to do that, but we, when we closed before, we did hire companies to come in and clean the buildings. And part of the reason we did that is because we didn't want to expose our own employees to the risk. And we, we felt like it was more prudent to, um, hire an outside company that was more prepared to do that. So we could do that again if we needed to. We aren't doing that right now. We're just having our housekeeping staff clean in a different way than they did before, just like everybody's doing everything different. They're cleaning in a different way, using different products, cleaning surfaces more frequently.
So can you set aside money out of this money for that or it sounds like it has to be spent by December 30th, what happens?
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, how are you gonna do that?
Yeah, you can't carry it over.
Then we'd have to do it on our own.
Correct.
That is true, yes.
Right.
And I, and I can speak to that as well. The, the plan currently is if we have another exposure or another incident in any of our buildings, to shut down for a limited period of time and bring in outside contractors mainly because they can do it quicker, they're better trained. The liability issues, we'll let an outside contractor handle that. Now, if we start having multiple recurrences, then we may have to revisit how we're handling that issue, but, uh, hopefully that's gonna be few and far between.
And the other, uh, question I had is looking at the, I, I think you sort of alluded to the new technology about light, the UVA, the light.
Right.
And, you know, they, they've shown on television how they clean whole areas and airplanes and all of that. So you're looking at, to see like how that might be a cost that we could.
Right.
Pay for and have the equipment.
Right, that's exactly right. To see if it would help us in our situation, the way our HVC, HVAC is set up and also other certain areas that it might be beneficial. We are going to look at that as well.
Okay. Well, thank you for all your hard work on this.
Thank you.
Supervisor Shepard?
I, I just want to say y'all, it looks like you've done a great job and I know it's a pain, uh, it has to be. I liked everything that's on here, uh, and one of the things you mentioned last on the last page was the countywide grant program. And I, I think it's a great idea to go that extra step and get those receipts. And I know it's a pain on everybody's part there, but. And I know it's a pain on everybody's part there, but I C Y A.
Right, that's right.
That's all I have.
Supervisor Demonts.
Well, first, I want to thank you for your leadership and working with the finance directors for the two towns to come up with a collaborative solution that everybody can, can say this is fair and this, you know, creates a real sense of community across the town of Blacksburg, the town of Christiansburg and Montgomery County. So thank you very much for your leadership as part of that. I also want to, you know, we're in the midst of a global pandemic, which is frightening and scary, and there's a lot of negativity associated with it. But I would like to just take an opportunity to say that in this presentation, you've highlighted some real bright spots of our community. Your collaboration with the finance departments for the two towns, also that we've assembled a CARES team that's, you know, operating across multiple departments all over the county to determine how we're spending this money. I think that that's also just really wonderful. And of course, the New River Valley Task Force, which is pulling together not just Montgomery County, but the whole region. And so we do have something to celebrate in the midst of the pandemic. And it's that it's bringing our communities closer together and, and helping us all work together better, get to know each other and truly care about each other. This is just one more example of that. And a special thank you to you and to everybody else at our finance department on top of your regular workload, monitoring the daily, hourly, secondly, changes and the eligibility requirements for this does not go unnoticed. Thank you so much for everything that you do.
Supervisor King.
Just a couple of things. I do appreciate everything y'all are doing and you're working together. That's wonderful. I would like you to look at one more thing. I know people that have small businesses. They've had to lay off their employees. So they're the only one left. I would like to help them, I really would.
The program would help them even if, if they had employees during, before the pandemic, but they've had to lay off employees since then, and they're the only one holding things together, they would be included in the program.
Oh, they can do, okay. All right, I misunderstood, I apologize.
I think I explained that exactly.
I apologize, I misunderstood. And talking to other localities too. Something like a hazard is paid for sheriff deputies that could not work from home and other county employees, have y'all looked at that?
We've looked at variations on pay. One of the things that we did with what the board approved for the COVID leave is probably as aggressive as any community around it. And that covered everybody. That covered deputies, it covered DSS workers. That's something we could add to that. But I think what we've already done is pretty extensive for the employees.
Yeah, but you know what I'm talking about? Some other localities that I've been talking to are adding on to their pay for essential workers like deputies and people that has to work. Like if you make $10 an hour, they're paying you a couple more dollars per hour for X amount of time.
Marty and I talked about that, and we don't know how they're able to do that under the.
I'll look at it again, but if I remember correctly, I think they actually specifically talked about that. And the guidance saying that you cannot do that. So there's various limitations. I'll look at it again, but I think, if I remember correctly, I think we talked about it.
All right, thank you.
These, I believe that some of our deputies were reassigned to work at the test sites. Some of the towns, police officers worked overtime to work at the test sites. So they're overtime because they didn't have enough staff to cover the test sites for them. Overtime would be covered. So if a deputy had to work on something that's specifically related to CARES or COVID that is overtime pay, not in the normal course of their day, then they, we could cover that.
And also their duties changed, like sheriff's office, for instance, in the jail. If they had created a new position or if a deputy had to take on work that it's totally related to COVID and they normally wouldn't, then you can, you can record that expense and pay that using CARES Act. But what you can't do is supplant anything that's within the normal budget. And that's why I added that language. If you budgeted that cost, let's say fire rescue or any of that, you're going to pay that cost anyway. You can't use CARES Act to then to cover that cost. So that makes sense. It's got to be, it's got to be totally related to the, to the COVID incident. And it's, it's got to be something they would otherwise be doing.
Well, this is paid on top of, like I said, you know, if you just make $10 an hour, they're just paying you 12 or so.
Right.
Called it hazard pay.
Right.
That'd be good.
Thank you.
Supervisor Blot.
Angie, thank you so much for all the work you guys. We appreciate the small business. That's what I'm interested in, to help get our businesses back up, try to help them as much as we can, particularly our daycare facilities. I've had several emails, daycare, that they're hurting. They can't afford the PPE, they've got restrictions and trying to keep their staff. So I'd like to, when Blacksburg and the towns of Blacksburg and Christiansburg, that will come out of their portion of the CARES money for their grants?
If the preschool or daycare facility or the business is located in the towns, it will come out of their individual shares. And if it's located in the county, then it would come out of our share of the funding.
And, and do we have a template? Our other localities have done their small business recovery grants of what we, you said it was going to be for less than 50 employees, is that correct?
Yes.
And how will we go about those eligibility requirements?
I have a draft document that the localities are looking at to see if everyone agrees with that, and we can share that with you as well. That has all the specific details. They have to be print on their taxes, they have to be registered as businesses, whichever, if they have to have a business license in the towns or be registered as a business with the county. They have to prove that they are really a business with their federal ID number and that kind of thing. So they're, we're going to get employment data. They would have to provide that to us based on the filings that they make with the Virginia Employment Commission. So we, there are, it's a fairly strict application process. And then that application will be reviewed before the funding will be approved.
And what type of grant limit, are we looking at a $10,000 grant maximum? Or are we going to tier it down, like depending on?
The proposal is tiered based on the number of employees. I think the first five employees is $1,000 per employee. And then after that, it's $500 per employee is what has been discussed. But that hasn't been finalized, so that would max out at about at $21,500 per business for the businesses. And then the preschool, like I said, is based on the number of enrollment, yes. And I don't know if they're determined for that. It's a little, it's not quite as developed as the business plan.
Good, great. So I'm really excited to hear about that because we want to definitely help out our law businesses. A question or two about going back to the New River Valley Public Health Task Force. You said that they're going to get $2.1 million and that we're funding, what are the other localities? Or do they have money that's going to go towards that as well?
We took that off the top of our allocation. That's what the finance directors recommended, is that out of our $8.6 million, we take 25% off the top and give it to the task force. And then the rest of it has been divided between the three jurisdictions.
Okay, I mean, for the other counties, like Pulaski, other counties?
Yes.
Where Pulaski, Floyd, Giles County, are they also giving part of their CARES money towards that?
Yes, that's my understanding that they're, when they make their contribution to the task force, that it will come from their sites, testing dates that are. It's a little bit hard to tell where the people who are getting tested at those sites live, but everybody again is working together and has said that.
Also thinking about weather and winter coming and being accessible. We'll probably, I'm sure they've already, they're always three steps ahead of everybody else. They'll probably already have a plan in place. But with bad weather, inclement weather coming, we want to make sure we're still up and running and accessible. Obviously, it'd be harder for people to get out. But there's things to think about with the mobile command unit. And let me see here, I think I had one more. Can't think of it right now, but these all look very good. And I'll be great to hear the estimates and how we can go with those small grants to get the businesses up and running. Thank you.
Thank you.
Vice Chair Bowman.
You're going to get questions kind of left and right just because of everybody asking their questions. And I don't know where it is in the presentation. Is Bedford able to construct? So it sounded like Bedford paid for the tower. But could they use the CARES funding for the tower and get the tower up in, before December 30th?
When I was making reference to Bedford earlier, it was, in general, I have no idea if they're utilizing any of their CARES Act money for that.
Supervisor Biggs mentioned stockpiling PPE, but if it's not used by December 30th, we can't stockpile, is that correct?
No, you can.
Yeah, we can stockpile.
But it's obviously within reason. You can't stockpile for two or three years when you wouldn't want to.
No, I just wanted to see how.
We have to receive it. We have to receive the goods or services before December 30th.
Yeah, we could do it for the next year.
Right. We could estimate usage for years.
Right. Okay. And then Supervisor King was talking about hazard pay. My interpretation hazard pay is the fact that the deputies and whomever are going into people's homes and things, and they don't know if they have COVID, you know? And so it is extra dangerous to do their work. But since they're getting paid to do it, who cares about the extra risk that they're taking? I don't understand what that about.
Decision is what the guidance has said so far. So, and the guidance changes every day. So if something comes out tomorrow, which something did come out at 4:00 today, but it doesn't address this, we would definitely let you know about it.
So for the kiosk that you're talking about for electronic payments in the government center, who would clean that every single time that someone would use it or not?
We've discussed that and we don't have the final answer, but we have discussed that it would have to be cleaned at least every hour. I don't know if it could be cleaned every single time someone uses it. We would have wipes beside it. So if the person who came up to it wanted to wipe it off before, they certainly would be able to do that. We have definitely discussed that. And then we would have our housekeeping staff clean it probably once an hour is what we've spoken about.
Okay. You talked about signage, sanitation, closed circuit TVs for courts. Where would the people go to see that closed circuit TV?
I can think of that. That's the jails, the regional jail. And what they're trying to do is minimize how many people are coming into the courthouse. Obviously.
I see, I see.
And not just courthouse, but leaving, coming back into the jail. Because that's the real fear, is the virus getting into the jails. So that's the reason why they're doing all the arrangements by, by.
Video closed TV.
You talked about HVAC. So let's say that, you know, they had trained people are up on a roof or wherever HVAC is, and there's damage to the roof. CARES Act can pay for the damage to.
I think we would make the.
I was going to say if it's the contractor.
If it was the contractor's responsibility or negligence, then they would have to pay for it. But if it was our responsibility, I would say this.
Okay. What about touchless door opening?
We have discussed that too. We're looking into that, but we haven't landed on it yet.
Okay. And I was following some of the conversation and your presentation, but I'm just going to ask the question because I'm not quite sure if I got my answer. Out of Blacksburg, out of Christiansburg, out of the county, as far as the small business grant program, have we allotted a certain portion of our dollars to be set aside for those grants?
No, we have not done that at this point because we don't know how many people will apply or be eligible for them. So I think that as we move forward and see how much the other costs are going to be and if the need is there, at that point, we would determine how much to set aside.
So it's my understanding that we have less than 10% employment in the county or thereabouts.
Last numbers, yes.
So 10% of, I don't know what our working population is, say 50,000, because I don't know. So 5,000 people have been laid off. And if you're giving the first five people $5,000, $5,000 per.
It's not necessarily to cover their pay though. It's to cover the cost of the business, like to get the business back on its feet, to get social, if it's a restaurant, for example, to give them funds to help them with social distancing with outdoor seating, with PPE for their employees.
Okay.
More than, it's not really for salary. And another thing is if they've received the PPE, PPP grant that covers pay, then that would be factored into this program as well. There's discussion about whether or not people would be eligible if they had received that grant, but they would not be able to use the money for both things, just like we can't.
Sure. I really would like you to explain what you do know about those preschools and what the grant has been, people who are talking about the grant and how enrollment.
For 30, for example, then the grant would provide funding for 15, 15 children, and it would be a certain dollar amount per child. But I do not know what that is off the top of my head, the amount per child.
So for that part of the grants, it's actually paying for the cost of care?
It's, it's similar to the business. It's to pay so that the preschool or daycare facility can operate. Because if they have to have social distancing with their children and they have the same staff ratio requirements, it's going to be hard for them to meet their payroll and get the PPE that they need and do their cleaning because they're having, they would have to buy a whole lot more cleaning supplies as well. So that's where those costs would be.
Grants could cause a lot of work. So are they also including like extra staff to process? You know, I know that the county, you know, there's not a lot of businesses in the county. I mean, there are plenty, but there's not nearly as much as within the town limits, I think.
Still going to be a lot of work.
Right.
It's supposed to be a lot of work. I don't know what the towns are going to do. The county is not planning on hiring those to do the work. We're just going to work for.
Short, short term, we are going to continue to evaluate as things move forward. Longer term, we may have to have a conversation about that.
But if you had to.
I was going to bring that up in the county administrator comments tonight.
If you had to hire some temporary help to help process, you could pay for it out of the CARES Act money, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. That's all my questions. Thank you so much. And again, you've got a full-time job. I can't imagine like this stuff on top of your full-time job. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And your staff.
Thank you.
Angie, based on all the things that you all have come up with, which I'm very impressed that you've hit on so many items. For more money. You know, things like taking care of our employees with all the touchless things. And I think the door is an excellent idea, unless that tech professor perfects that substance he's going to put on there which sheds viruses. But, but you know, you get into the HVAC equipment in all our buildings, and that's going to be, it's going to be a sizable amount. That's, I'm assuming it's going to be a more expensive fix than just putting in filters. But, but the big one is this radio infrastructure and backup for the 911 center. I can't imagine what that, that would cost. That would have to be a big number, but.
And I, I don't, the task force doesn't have a number for that either. So they're looking into that.
And I wanted to just briefly add to that. We, the 911 center does have an emergency backup. If we had an issue that affected the 911 center, we can transfer everything to the government center and operate out of this facility. center and operate out of this facility. That's a short-term solution. It's not a longer-term solution. What happens if something happens up there and we're out a month? Then that's what we're talking about with the task force.
So would this be a portable?
Yeah, we actually have, we already have equipment in this building that if they had to shut down up there, they can come down here in short notice and be up and running.
Is it in the fallout shelter?
I can't disclose. It's a secret location. I can't disclose where we keep that stuff.
Angie, thanks a lot. A great job because you all are really on top of this thing. I just, just hope that number one, we have enough money. Number two, you can get all of it done by December 30th. I think that's, that's going to be more challenging than finding the money, but thank you very much.
They're going to treat the train really, really hard every day. They're going to get tired of me.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Do we have a motion to come out of work session unless there's anything else that you?
Motion.
Second. May I have a motion in a second? Madam Secretary?
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Ms. Blevins?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Booth?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Mox?
Aye.
Chair for Chukowski?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
All right, we are out of work session, and we are going to take a quick 10-minute break. So we'll be back here around 26 after 9:00.[701.12] All right, let's get back to business. And speaking of business, we have new business. First item is ordinance rezoning Jerry and Vicki Akers. Do we have a motion?
Semud.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any discussion? No discussion. Madam Secretary, please call roll.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Motts?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Ms. Blevins?
Aye.
Chair for Chakaski?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Next item is the ordinance rezoning Jason and Indra McGrady. Do we have a motion?
Semud.
Second.
A motion in a second. Any discussion? No discussion. Madam Secretary, call roll.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Motts?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Ms. Blevins?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Chair for Chakaski?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Next item is the ordinance to amend the county code, Chapter 10 zoning for travel center.
Semud. Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? No discussion. Madam Secretary?
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Motts?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Ms. Blevins?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Chair for Chakaski?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Next item is the ordinance to amend the county code, Chapter 10 zoning for signs.
Motion. Second.
Have a motion in a second. Do we have any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Madam Secretary, call roll.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Ms. Blevins?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Chair for Chakaski?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Next item is the ordinance to amend county code, Chapter 10 zoning for signs.
Motion. Second.
Have a motion in a second. Do we have any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Madam Secretary, call roll.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Ms. Blevins?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Motts?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Chair for Chakaski?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
All right, now we get to where the real work is done, in our report section. And first up is our county attorney.
Mr. Chair, I have nothing more to add tonight.
Well, you've done a fine job, so I guess we can excuse you. All right, next is our county administrator.
Mr. Chair, two items to add this evening. I did send out an email last week regarding a potential work session to get everyone up to speed on capital projects that the county's contemplating and currently working on. It does appear that everyone was available next Monday, August 3rd, at 6 o'clock. We will have the work session at that time. It'll be in MP2, right next door over here. That'll be an opportunity to provide you with an update on the projects that are currently underway, talk about a few projects that we have talked about, but that aren't currently underway, so we can get a consensus on where we are with those and what you'd like to see moving forward. So that's next Monday at 6:00. We will try to have somebody from Thompson and Litton here. We'll have county staff here. Hopefully, that'll be a good opportunity for us to talk about where we are with various projects. And I appreciate Supervisor King mentioning that. It's amazing how fast the year is going by, so we need to, we need to take a, take a pause and talk about where we are with some of that stuff. Only other thing I wanted to add tonight is I can't tell you how proud I am of the county's leadership team, the department directors, folks that we have managing various aspects of the county right now. As you heard tonight, just with two presentations, the things that we're working on right now, the things that we're trying to deal with, in particular with the CARES Act, I don't think there's a single department director in the county that's not been involved in those discussions and activities and looking at what it takes to do that. So, you know, we're a very lean organization to start with, so the last couple of months have really been a challenge in terms of pivoting and addressing all the issues that have come up. But I can't tell you how proud I am of the folks that we have in this organization, that all the employees and the members of leadership team that are really taking on some roles that they, six, nine months ago, had no idea that they'd be taking on. But they've done an excellent job, and I appreciate your support for them as well. That's all I have.
Well, we definitely, I think everyone would second that. And thank you for having the good eye to select these people to be in those positions to accomplish all that, because it's, it's almost like you give them enough work for 80 hours a week, and then you say, oh, now we're gonna tie one hand behind your back and keep going. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. That's all I have.
All right, supervisors' reports. I'm gonna go down my little list here. Supervisor Blevins?
I just wanted to, first of all, say congratulations to Montgomery County Regional Tourism for their $10,000 grant that they were awarded for the, was it Wander Love? Is that correct? So that's great that they received that. Wanted to do a shout-out to Onward for their intern program that they hosted this summer, where we got to have some interns and welcome into Montgomery County, and hopefully that we can retain their talent. They'll come back and make this their home. And then wanted to remind everyone about the ACE Race, Virtual Race, August the 7th through the 9th, to raise money for, of course, our wonderful ACE program that I'm proud to support. And just to ditto Mr. Meadows' comments for all of our employees, everyone has stepped out, stepped up in these challenges, challenging situations that we've had with the COVID, and everyone's performed just as what you expect. In Montgomery County, we always have the best, so we're extremely proud of all of our leaders and, of course, Mr. Meadows for his leadership and always has a good eye to pick the right person to for Montgomery County. And that's all I have.
Supervisor King?
Don't have no report, but I would like to thank the staff for all they've done, not only here at the government center, but Sheriff's Office, PSA, and everybody has stepped up, and that's what makes the county so wonderful to live in. People go together when they need to be together, and I do appreciate that from each one of them. And I would like to say, when you mow your grass, if you would, please pay attention and not blow it in the road, excuse me, because grass on the road to a motorcycle is like ice on the road to a car. I didn't realize that, and somebody confronted me with it. So now I got a leaf blower.
And it's the law.
Not Ryanair. That's all.
Supervisor Biggs?
Well, I'm, in the employees, is there a way that, since all of us are on board with that, that we can send a message from our board to the employees of Montgomery County through you?
Absolutely.
For their recognition at this meeting? I'd like to make that a motion.
Second. Absolutely.
All in favor?
Aye.
We have a Huckleberry Today section on the internet that when you bring up, that's where citizens, it's where employees can get the latest information on what's going on in the county. We'll add that to it. Thank you.
That'll be great. Okay, well, I'll make mine short. As you know, after many, many hours, we finally came to a consensus with our airport authority, and we hired Mr. Keith Holt as the new executive director of the Virginia Tech Montgomery County Regional Airport, and he started today. And then the only other thing I want to report, we did have a NRV Regional Coalition Drug Court Advisory Committee meeting today. And since we've started drug courts in the New River Valley, which started, we started them in 2014, we've had 140 attendants, 36 graduates, and 63 active right now. And in Montgomery County, that breaks down, I thought you'd be interested to know, we started ours in May of 2017, so we've had 37 people enrolled, eight graduates, and 19 active clients. COVID, it sort of put a lot of stress on that, because it's, you know, an in-person kind of thing, and, but there are people waiting to be considered as clients, and so hopefully they'll get that back going again. And that's it.
Thank you. Supervisor Demott?
Well, I'm just going to kind of dovetail with what Supervisor Blevins said in talking about the tourism grant. That grant, and it is my great privilege to serve as part of our tourism committee. And that grant is specifically to market our area as a great location with wide open spaces where physical distancing, distancing is easily achieved. And our tourism department has really stepped up during the pandemic. They're just one more example of a bright spot. They've really stepped up in marketing our outdoor recreation opportunities. So I certainly want to encourage people who might be getting a little bit bored, maybe a little bit of cabin fever, staying at home, to go out and check out some of our beautiful local assets in the great outdoors. Also, of course, a huge thank you to all of our employees. I think we've, we all can totally agree at what a wonderful job has been done by the staff of Montgomery County, and how blessed we all are to live in such a wonderful community where everybody works so hard every day to make it better for those of us that, that live here. So thank you very much.
Okay, Supervisor Shepherd?
Just want to reiterate what Supervisor Blevins and King and Demott said about all the good things that's going on and all the great staff we have. And on a side note, I was out of the county, a little farther southwest of here, where one of the towns is having, our cities is having a little bit of a uptick in their cases and, right, quite a few more cases. And it's easy to see why. A lot of the places I went into, nobody was social distancing or wearing masks. And I think you need to do one or the other, and it, you can see why they were having such issues with their county, with their, yeah, county and area. So, and I appreciate everybody, social distancing or wearing a mask. I think we all do a pretty good job of that here. That's all I have.
Thank you. Vice Chair Bone?
I agree with that the employees are awesome. I do want to make a shout-out to the school board and the administration and their marathon meeting. It's hard to do what they're doing, and they are stepping up to the challenge and serving our community as best they can, and will continue to do so. Moving the date of start of school to the 8th, you know, gives them more time to make other decisions about how the schools will open, and children will learn, and I really appreciate that. That's it.
Okay, well, thank you. I really don't have anything to add to all that. That's all good stuff. So I guess the best thing I could say is adjourned.